I don't know. There was some resistance.
You doing okay?
Doing good, how about you?
Doing well, thanks.
In the burbs.
That's true.
Do you need me to come here?
Yeah. Nobody wants that, so.
It's a hot seat.
Just play it on the table.
The next year.
Go ahead and call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting. Before we start, Larry Collins. Chuck, are you going to do the invocation for us?
Sure.
I'd like to leave it.
To the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic where all sustains. Our nation, America. Indemnisable with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's go with the. Batchet County Library in Pittsburgh.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Item one.
The Library District requests your discussion and possible approval to close district libraries on Saturday, May 24, 2014. Saturday, July 5, 2014. And Saturday, August 30, 2014. Due to low demand for library services on these holiday weekends.
Okay.
I second the motion to approve.
Is the motion a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have a three in favor, opposed. Item two?
The Library District requests your discussion and possible approval to accept a donation in the amount of $1,436.20 from the South River Project Boosters Association through the agency of the United Way of Northern Arizona, where no conditions attached to this donation.
Okay.
I'll second the motion to approve with a comment and a question.
There is a motion and a second to approve. Any comments, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Powell, thank you for sending back the information I requested. I'm just curious. I'm always amazed at donations that come in. Do we do any soliciting? Do we participate in anything with SRP or organizations that promote this? Or does this just appear out of air?
No, it appears out of people's confidence. Each fall, SRP and Boosters Association invites local organizations to attend their agency here. And in order to remain out of trouble, we have to attend and send representatives each year. They're typically last two hours. And what the Florida generating station was is they hold this in their, it seems like a cafeteria. And then the employees come down in shifts and they visit agency clinical support agencies in the group table. We send two of our, two representatives from the Library District. And what they do is they share with them who come down and visit what our collections are, what kinds of things are available, library facilities, what our services are. And our equipment, discusses library equipment. And we consider this an outreach program for the Library District. And we spots if they like what they see in here. And they, through their whole production, they give donations to the Library District. And then we use those donations to support children's programming, strategic planning, electronic resources, and collection of.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So I commend you for your interest to attend the boosters program. And I commend, and I thank the employees and members of the booster that donated because this comes from the employees of SRP, really from their pockets. And so I just wanted to thank everybody involved in that.
Well, and each time we receive a chat, I thank the employees on behalf of the board of supervisors.
Thank you.
Okay, there's another questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have a three in favor, opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Second to the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Library District, Mr. Ryan Gern. Let's go to the next one. Batchet County, Gerald District, mean. Item one, good morning, Chief. The ayes have a three in favor, opposed. Thank you.
I'm gonna second the motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Gerald District, Mr. Ryan Gern. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's move on to the Board of Supervisors meeting. Item one. Ryan, is Ryan there? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Good morning. My name is Ryan McPherson. I'm with Kinder Morgan Energy Departments. We are here to discuss the St. John's Field Development and development plan that we had coming years. Joining me today are members of the Kinder Morgan CO2 Project Team. Also presenting with me will be Corey Hartman and Barrett School. A brief agenda. I provided information and will be speaking to this PowerPoint. Here's the agenda. But just a little bit of background about Kinder Morgan, who we are, what we do, and what we operate. Kinder Morgan is a national energy transportation storage. We own and operate pipelines and terminals for the nation's largest pipeline operator that 80,000 miles of pipeline, 70,000 of that is natural gas, but we also transport. Thanks. Proper taxes can play a huge state as well as to. We own and operate about 5,000 miles of pipeline in Arizona. And those are listed right there. What I will do is I will be able to answer any questions afterwards. But what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Corey Hartman to discuss the specifics surrounding the development here in there.
Mr. Chairman, the district board. What I wanted to do is introduce the project team. Now, this is not the engineered project team to be here without it. But we tried to emphasize the potential to find and counter here on occasion. So to start with, I'm especially interested in interviewing Mr. Ryan, actually based on the system. There are people on my team, mainly Travis is a county who is a geologist who did out there. As well as Carlos, who is our production engineer. We also have Barry Smith, who is a parent of two men who are services of a manager they have during the program. The other two are the ones that are actually based here. And we have two boxes being involved. One is Jim Smith, he's based in Springfield. The other is Tom White, who is a resident. So just an overview of the St. John's Field location. These are the boundaries between St. John's and Springfield. We refer to the St. John's Field as a geologic structure that's actually made up of two units. And one is the St. John's Gaps, which is what we'll talk about today. The other is called the Canyon, which is the numerical side. So this is just a notional rendition of our field development plan. You'll see in the end that one of the philosophies that we're trying to maintain is how do we develop the field in a minimalized surface impact? But we're trying to keep our core development areas as small as the actual unit five, about 40% of the actual unit five. In the middle of the. And that's kind of our line of demarcation. Our to the field development. Everything in pink is probably north area, or phase two. Everything in orange is south area, or phase one. Most of the early development is going to be in that large area. All the boxes are presented well location. Each of those walls are constructed for those sort of storage vehicles. And then those walls are there to flow on. Back to the major lines, which are like. From a field facility standpoint, we're getting all our permits and surveys and we're negotiating our power supply, working on water source wells that we'll use for our operation and doing site work for us in the facility. And then there's a Lebo's pipeline, you will not represent it today, but they're working on their EIDs and their public knowledge committees as well, primarily in the metro.